Wisconsin Rapids Zoning Board of Appeals of April 14th, 2020 at 2:00 PM. First item of business is the approval of the report from the February 23rd, 2020, Zoning Board of Appeals meeting.
I so move Chairman.
We have a motion and a second to approve the report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Second item of business is variance 22-000182 Chad Worrell, public hearing in action on a request for a variance from side and rear yard setback to construct an accessory structure at 850 Rosecrans Street, parcel ID 3401550. And I'll give, have the staff report before we start the public hearing.
All right. Good afternoon, Zoning Board of Appeals members. So this item was previously before the ZBA in February. And when the applicant was submitting plans for the Plan Commission report, staff noticed that the dimensions for the addition didn't match what was approved in February. And so after doing some checking, the zoning board handbook is a guide that kind of parses out Wisconsin case law and gives guidance to Zoning Board of Appeals in terms of how to move forward with different scenarios. And the zoning board handbook was pretty clear that when relief is granted, that's granted for the project and the associated plans. And so whatever dimensions are submitted, however that plan is submitted, is what we need to move forward with. And since this did differ, even though slightly, we did need to proceed with a second variance application per that guidance. So this, the rest is going to be similar to what you saw in February because the analysis is consistent with what we kind of had seen before. And so again, we don't see any unique property limitations that substantiate this addition, this additional area or the original area. We don't see any unnecessary hardship. And we still believe that the variance could set precedent for similar applications for, you know, overly built out sites. And so we again are saying we don't see unique property characteristics. We don't see any kind of hardship. And so our recommendation is for denial of this, of this additional space.
Unless there's some questions, I'll open the public hearing and I'm going to ask three times for those in favor and three times for those against. And when you speak, please give your name and address so they can be put into the record. Okay? I'll ask the first time. Anyone here who is in favor of this request? I'll ask second time. Is anyone here in favor of this request?
So this, this first item is pertaining to Chad Worrell. You're the second item on the agenda. So I think the item you're most concerned about is next on the agenda. Okay? Yep?
Okay. And I'm going to ask third and last time, anybody here in favor of this request? Okay. Hearing none. Is there anybody here against this request? Is there anybody here against this request? And third and final time, is there anyone here against this request? Okay. The public hearing is closed and I'll turn it over to the zoning board for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I feel that Mr. Worrell is waking up like Bill Murray on Groundhog Day and he's wondering why am I back here again? I'm thinking that it might have been changed just a wee bit, but I'm thinking we're cutting it awful thin here. So I don't see any reason, maybe even why he should be here, but besides that, I'm in favor of.
I got one question for staff. What legally, what does the first approval mean? Is that hold and then this just adds on to it? Is that how this works?
That's correct. So the first approval was for the plans as approved at the first meeting. So that approved the use as well as the dimensional kind of standards that were outlined in the plans. So this subsequent approval is approving that additional area. So let me go back to this slide. So the area called out as added area, that square is what is being approved at this meeting because there's an additional encroachment with that additional space. So the dimensions, all the other dimensions were previously approved and they're not up for discussion this time at all. It's just that added area.
Chad, you can speak.
So after further taking measurements of that back corner, to get to my second story for this new addition, I need approximately 30 feet for my staircase in the mechanical room. So that's what that addition is for. So I can meet standard of commercial code for that staircase. So that's why we had to build the, the shop area is the 22 by 50, but the mechanical room is the extra 15 feet to get to 65 feet to the north property line. So I have to go to the west for my staircase to get up to the second story. So that all that, that it's basically an extra 12 by 15 that was added on the sketch. That was kind of an afterthought after we started taking further measurements after we got the variance for the one foot setback at the last meeting. So that's my fault. The drawings didn't match, but I had no idea that you guys were voting on the actual drawing and the rendering. I thought it was just setback variance.
Mr. Chairman, a question for Chad. How were you accessing on the last drawing, your mechanical room or whatever?
It was just going straight back. There was no jog to the northwest.
Okay.
So that added area right there, that little square is what was added on and they approved it at the planning commission, five to one, or five to zero, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, and I understand that you voted to give me access one foot variance off that north property line. And with the finalized drawing, there'll actually be three feet from my building to the lot line, not one foot.
Mr. Chairman and administration, Kyle, have we heard anything from, any more from the neighbors on this proposal versus the first one? I know there was a petition signed in favor of it by almost all the neighbors surrounding him, but I'm wondering on this particular one, have we heard anything either for or against it?
So we received six letters for the first one and we have heard nothing in addition.
So probably assume that they're fine with this also since they didn't object. So thank you.
If there isn't any other discussion, is there a motion one way or another?
My opinion on this hasn't changed since the last meeting. So I would move that we allow this as presently drawn if that is going to comply with what you ultimately will build.
Oh, second. Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the request. I'll do a roll call vote on this. Jerry P.
Can I interject? With any zoning board action, we ask for the reasoning to support the motion. So if you could maybe provide some context with regards to the motion to approve, that would be appreciated for the meeting minutes.
My context for this motion is that the setback from lot lines has become greater than it was originally presented. We okayed it at that point for those reasons, for the reasons stated. And since the situation has gotten better, not worse, I moved that we approve it at this point as well. So use the old reasoning.
I'll start the roll call vote. Jerry P.
Aye.
Lee Gossick. Okay. Mike Hittner.
Aye.
Dennis Pollak.
Aye.
And myself, I'm voting no based on the staff's recommendation. So we have, let's see, three ayes, one abstention and one nay. So motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item is variance 22 dash 000164 Betty Jean, I hope I say your name right. Lizzen?
Lizzen?
Lizzen? Okay. Sorry. Public hearing in action on a request for variance from the front and side yard setbacks and a maximum building coverage ratio to construct an enclosed porch at 331 Ninth Street North, parcel ID 3407138. And we'll start with the staff report again.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to confirm first, did everyone receive the one additional item that was passed out? Okay. Because that was also submitted for public records. So we do have one additional thing. And this, this item is a request for variance from front and side yard setbacks and also from maximum building coverage. The applicant is requesting a variance from the setbacks and the building coverage to construct an enclosed front porch on the property. And the required front yard setback is 25 feet. And as proposed, the porch would be eight feet, seven inches from the front property line. The required side yard setbacks are seven feet and 10 feet. And the resulting setbacks would be five foot, six inch and then six feet. And the maximum building coverage allowed is 30%. And with this addition, the applicant would be at 50.9%. So looking just for some background, there have been some previous additions to the property. In 2003, the applicant received a building permit to construct a 10-foot by 29-foot addition to the back of the house and also a 16 by 16-foot patio area. Later that year, a separate permit was received to extend the roof over the front entry and add another 12 by 12-foot addition. And then since that time, the front patio area has been enclosed. So there have been some additions to the property. And in looking at this, one of the main reasons given by the applicant is for disability access, to be able to have a ramp and adequate access through the front door, which staff is very amenable to. And actually, we do have a section that where the building inspectors are allowed to, even if a ramp won't fit into the traditional standards, that it can be constructed for, you know, health and safety reasons. But I guess what is, the impetus for this is wanting an enclosed porch around that ramp area is where we're having the issues with the setbacks and the lot coverage because a ramp wouldn't affect any kind of building coverage standards. So looking at the property, we're not finding any unique property limitations. The property is a pretty standard residential property. In terms of unnecessary hardship, because there is the ability to construct that ramp, we're not seeing any kind of unnecessary hardship that exists. And in terms of the neighbors, up until today, we had not received any neighbor response. Today, we did get a phone call from someone stating that they didn't, they didn't approve of the project, but they were not able to attend today. And so we are finding that no unique property characteristics exist and any hardship claimed appears to be self-created. And so for that reason, we are recommending denial.
I will open up the public hearing and anybody that speaks, please give your name and address for the public record. I'll ask three times, anybody in favor would come to the podium and speak. Anybody against would come to the podium and speak. So first time, is there anyone here who's in favor of this project?
Can you hear me okay? The reason for me coming to get this done is because slowly I am losing the ability to lose, to use the bottom half of my body. It's a result of a serious accident that happened in 2003. The Lord had blessed me with being able to walk again, but He's slowly saying it's time to rest, that you don't need to be walking all the time. And because of this past injury, it makes it difficult for me to go through the back kitchen, down the stairs and go answer the gate if somebody comes to the home. And to be able to use the porch with a wheelchair, it's not big enough. I wouldn't be able to go out on the porch that's there now. It would cause me to be trapped there because I would not be able to turn the wheelchair around. When I first came home from the hospital after the accident, my husband had to go to the hospital and the gurney could not even get through that area. They had to carry him out of the house with a number of people. And so this is why I'm aware of the fact that emergency people would not be able to go through the kitchen area and get to the ambulance if the problem arises. And I'm trying to make this area safe for me to be able to go out with a wheelchair, answer the door and come back in the house safely and be able to stay in my home as long as I live, if it so be the Lord's will. But the stoop that is there now, the base of it is sinking in the ground and it needs to be repaired. The posts are pulling the roof that's over the area right now, pulling the roof down. So that has to be repaired. And what I have up there right now is not up to codes for securing the area and I want to bring this up to codes. I want to be able to put lights out there for to make it more safe. I want to put locks that are proper and I want to be able to open and close the door that is proper, that, to make things right and let people in and out of the door as be when they come to the house. This is my sole reason for doing this upgrade on my porch right now. Even, even with the porch being enlarged, it will not come out past my neighbors. It will still be back of my neighbors. And if you can see a way for me to do this, I would appreciate it.
Okay. I'll ask again, is there anyone else here that's in favor of this project? Is there anybody else here who's in favor of this project? And I'll go again, anybody here that's against this project? Anybody here that's against this project? And final time, anybody here that's against this project? I'll close the public hearing and I'll turn it over to the board.
Mr. Chairman, a question for staff. When you said that a handicapped accessible porch or ramp could be built out there within this, without going through a zoning board of appeals or anything, you're talking about like an aluminum one? Is that what you're talking of? One of those zigzag ones to, that goes an inch of foot or whatever it is?
May I answer that question? The ramp, when you're zigzagging it, you have to have landings in between. You can't just turn a wheelchair going down. And by the time I figured it out, it would bring me way out on the sidewalk. And that you can't do either.
Right. Staff, do you know if that's, if that's the facts or?
So the zoning ordinance has a certain section that allows for unenclosed wheelchair ramps to exist within the setback area, provided that it's reasonable. So again, the key there is unenclosed, meaning no roof, no walls. Basically, the ramp that you think of and you see in many neighborhoods can encroach in the setback. But we don't have the ability to approve anything beyond that. So in this case, with the enclosure and the roof, it's looked at as an addition. And henceforth, the reason that it's before the body here, because we do not have the authority under that section to approve it.
Would the handicap aluminum ramp come out like Betty Jay says, out to the sidewalk? Is it going to come out that far with the landings that have to be put in there?
I have not seen a spec on a wheelchair ramp. So the applicant hasn't provided one, nor have we done an analysis for it. Typically, we're in a position to respond. So for example, if somebody wanted to do an unenclosed wheelchair ramp, they would have to submit a schematic and a plan to us, to us to make sure the rise and run meet the applicable code. And yes, to make sure that it does not encroach into the public right of way, we have not received such plan at this point.
Thank you. Let me go ahead, Betty Jean. Originally, when I looked at this, I was opposed to it. But now when I look a little closer at it and we talk about no hardship, because she was in a traffic accident that she had nothing to do, that created a hardship for her. I can see that the property has five courts and a four court pail. I can see that just from the aerials, you know, view of it and everything. But she has certain conditions here that I think that are unique, both for her physically and for the property itself. When I went by it, it looks nice and neat. It was kept up well. I didn't see any, you know, stuff around there. If I do make a motion in favor of it, I want to hear from my other board members here. I would say that I didn't see any gutters on that house and the house is awful close to the neighbors and I'd want to see gutters on that addition plus the rest of the house too, because they're awful close. You know, there's only six, seven feet between the neighbors there and I don't know where that water is all going, so. But I'd like to hear from some of my other board members.
I just had a question on, I don't know how accurate this drawing is, but it looks like there's quite a bit more porch than that's needed for a ramp. And I can see the doorway and then the rest, all the red area seems to be non-ramp area if I'm reading this correctly. So this porch is quite a bit more than just for the ramp, if I'm reading the plan correctly.
Too bad we don't have the builder here that could lighten us to the, is this over and above beyond what we need or can we scale it back some or what? You know, Betty Jay, is this, is this all that you need or is this a little more, you know, a little more square footage than you need for the, for your access and that sort of thing?
This, this is all that I will need for, for an access out because the way out then would be quite easy for me then at that point. When, when I have to get out, I can then much better. I do go out that door when somebody comes, but I'm afraid right now, the way it's going down, it's three inches lower towards the sidewalk than it is towards the house. And then sometimes I think I'm going to fall when I just walk down it. Because it's, it's a four, four foot space from the door to, to the outside edge. And I try to avoid not to fall because they said if you fall again, you probably will never ever walk again because the hip was so badly damaged in the car accident that they were surprised that I ever was able to get up on my feet and walk again after
Mr. Chairman? I was also quite pleasantly surprised that she's got a builder for this, that's actually putting in a lot of money to this. I mean, you can see, what was it, $15,000 or $18,000 or something like that? It isn't like just a little slap dab thing.
Be over $20,000, but I've been saving for this because I knew it was going to come and I didn't want it to come. Nobody wants to be back in a wheelchair or even start to live in a wheelchair, but I knew it was going to come. And I went out looking for a home that I could make into a handicap and I couldn't find anything. I'd looked over a year in the builder that's going to be doing the work. He'd even come and he would look over and he, he says, it just wouldn't fill the bill. You know, so I haven't been doing this on my own trying to, and I do like the area. And I just would like to be able to stay in a home because when I lived in that nursing home there, it was, they treated me well, but it felt like you were in a prison and I don't want to go back to that kind of living if I don't have to.
I just had a question on ramps have a specific grade that they're supposed to be on. Looks like we're covering three steps and we don't have any diagram on, on the ramp. How do we, how did we size up the porch then? That's my question.
Is that a question for staff or the applicant?
Well, anybody that can provide an answer, yeah.
Yeah. So I, you know, again, we're in a position to respond. These are the materials we received, you know, and are making a recommendation based off of those materials. I think right, as the materials show, the porch is nine by 15. We don't have an interior layout of what it looks like once you're inside of the structure, the proposed structure.
Trying to, on the other side, trying to figure out how to do a ramp. The one who takes me out on the sidewalk and the other who takes me right where the car may be parked. So I try to get them. And I, and I look up the, maybe.
Do you want us to circulate this to the?
That's okay if they want it.
Those appear to be some schematics that show what it would look like for a ramp. They're the first time we've seen them or reviewed them. So it's hard for us to comment or provide any further details.
Well, my understanding is this ramp can be built. The only question we've got is there going to be a roof and walls around it?
These are with the American Handicapped Disabled, Disabled Association measurements that I used. You're supposed to have one foot for every inch up and you're supposed to have it so wide so that a wheelchair can pass through and leave room for you to be able to maneuver the wheels. And then you're supposed to allow so much room on each side so that there's room for the post and safety, you know, on the side of the post so that, you know, it's got, his post has strength. And that's what I went by for size to go out. And to build this, to be there, would cost me almost as much as to try to do this finished porch that look better for the neighborhood.
Is there a ramp inside this porch? Is the ramp inside this porch or are you adding it onto this porch that you're building?
The porch that's there would.
It would be level with your house? You would just walk out and then you would need a ramp to get out of the porch?
You'd have to have the, the ramp to go around and down to the ground. You'd have to have the, the ramp to go around and down to the ground. And when you're in a wheelchair, you do not want somebody, you do not want to open up a door and let somebody right there in your face, because it's, you have no way of defending yourself if somebody wants to do you harm. And that is part of the reason why that lattice was put around, so that when I went out there, walked out there, there would be that barrier from keeping people from, it give me a little bit of a security by being able to go, they weren't able to come right to my front room. Otherwise, if you take that porch away, that's there now, and it had been there previous before we did the remodeling, you walk right into my front room and dining room. It's right there. And you go right down the hallway to the bathroom. And that's why I proposed that when they do the porch, make the steps go towards the car instead of out to the street. That enclosement around that roof over the driveway, when we done that at that time, it was planned to be open. And the building inspector said, you have to put up a wall, partial wall around, so a car cannot drive underneath there, because there's windows there. And he says that's a safety factor, that no car ever goes underneath that roof because of gas exhaustions. And so that's why the wall was put up. And then my husband talked to the building inspector at that time, and he says, well, how about I put the lattice up for shade? And the building inspector, he says, well, give me a drawing of what you think would look nice. And the building inspector approved it. And that's why that lattice and the wall was put there, because the building inspector did not want a car ever to be able to go underneath that roof to the garage that's be in back of that That was kind of the building inspector's idea to have something done with that problem We used to put up a tarp for the summer, and the building inspector said it would look nicer to put a permanent roof over it. And then there wouldn't be the ice problem in the winter and snow problem by the back door. That's kind of how that area got built. He also did some other suggestions, and we followed his suggestions. He just, he knew what he, what should look right for the community. And if I am given permission, whoever comes to, for the inspection, to make sure the job's done right, I will go with them, because I want it right. I want it safe. I want it to look right.
Me? I'm wondering what your timing is on this project. I'm wondering what your timing is on this project.
He told me it would take him sixty-eight weeks, when I sat down with him in December, because I already talked to Dave Manny in December, and then now that the weather is right to start doing it.
So you have a reserved spot with this contractor?
Yes, yes.
Just looking over the drawing, and, you know, considering how we make a decision on this board, to me, it's not clear that this plan works. Sorry to say, I just don't understand how there'd be enough room within that enclosure to put the ramp that you require.
I wouldn't be putting the ramp if I had the porch. I would not be needing a ramp.
I guess that's part of the story that I wouldn't be clear on, then.
I'm planning on putting an electrical lift back there.
Well, that kind of changes everything.
So the kind that they showed, that I've been researching, I would be able to. And it would still look nice.
Yeah, I can understand that. That would probably only take a four by six area or so.
They have these here lifts that are supposed to go in the ground, and when you need them, they come up. And that's what I'm researching. You see them advertised in front of, like courthouse and that?
Yes, I'm familiar with that type of ramp.
I mean, who wants everybody to know you need a ramp? It's like a flag. She's somebody to go after.
I've got a question for staff. Is it possible, if we don't have a recommendation, to put this on hold till we get more specific information on exactly what's going to be built?
Yes, you can postpone action or, or take no action. I want to clarify, when we met with her, and we met with her a few times, you know, she indicated the difficulty in trying to install a ramp. She mentioned, I think that there was a lift in the garage, I believe, currently.
The lift, the lift is just outside my kitchen door, and it will only take a wheelchair, because to come home from the nursing home back then, he had to put a lift there, and it took up a big area of my area underneath that roof. And it has to be a roof over it to protect it from the weather and everything. And that's what I used to get in and out of the house when I first came home. And then he made steps when I started walking. He made steps that were extra short and wide, so that I'm able to use the steps out my back door. And there's railings on both sides that I go out the back door. So, but in the wintertime, I don't go to the store anymore, because I don't want to get out in the cold. The only places that I went was here. Very limited, it went here that one day. And then I went for a couple of doctor visits that you have to do. But I don't want to fall again. I don't, I don't want, I don't want to be on the ice. I don't want to be on the snow. So in the winter months, I do stay in, and I have somebody else to do the shopping, because, and I've quit going to church. I miss it, but he's still with me. He's still with me.
You know, and, and so I think we recognize and appreciate the applicant's desire to pursue, you know, some relief from what she's described from an access standpoint. However, you know, we've got to enforce the ordinance as it's written. And so we've got to look at other options with regards to the wheelchair ramp language in the code for an unenclosed structure. We also have to look at whether or not we can accept the physical limitations of a disabled applicant to, as, as reason for a physical limitation of the property. And unfortunately, the zoning board handbook and state statute is pretty clear that we can't take into consideration any physical limitation of, of the disabled applicant, especially in the event that they're able to provide access as they are under the current zoning code. So I want to make that clear distinction. I also want to reference in regards to the chairperson's comment, that when we received the information, again, there was no internal plan showing any sort of lift on the interior of the structure, or a ramp on the interior of the structure. Obviously, the exterior rendering shows a few steps leading up to the door. So again, we've made our recommendation based on this being an addition onto the home, basically an enclosed front porch addition. It's unheated. And that's, again, what was the basis to our recommendation of denial. So again, just providing that distinction and clarity also.
I have got one question on the, the one objection we received. Is that just informational, or in some public hearings, it has a legal significance, and adjacent property objection? In this case, it's just informational, or is there legal binding on any of this?
So under statute, we notify individuals within a three-hundred-foot radius, and they're more so made known of the public hearing, and are welcome to speak at the public hearing. If they cannot do so, we encourage them to provide comment in writing, in email form or written form, or via telephone. In this case, we received an anonymous call. I think it was a pretty brief call that our secretary in the office received, stating that they did not support the addition. So we don't have a, a name of that individual, but we've recognized it and recorded it. And it's our duty to mention it to this board in the event that they want to recognize that, in particular, to the third statutory review item as to whether it's detrimental to the public or not.
Mr. Chairman, as far as any anonymous call, I wouldn't give much credence, or whatever, to that. I mean, if they can't say their name and who they are and where they live, who knows who they are. But I agree with the chairman. I think that we have to have a little more information before we can make a wise decision on this. And I wonder, Betty Jean, if you could have your builder come with you, just some clarification of this, because more and more information seems to come out as we went through this. And I don't want to deny you, if, if it's a good plan, and if we got somebody that can explain it to us. But maybe if we could delay it for a little bit, and then you could have maybe Dave Mann come with you, and then we could go through that a little more in clarification. And if you've got any more drawings or plans, maybe that the staff should get that in advance, it'd be, it'd be helpful to them to also. So I would move that it'd be held over for review in, in the next month, or whenever it can be brought on agenda.
The ramp was, the ramp was not my idea. They suggested maybe doing a ramp, and then I figured it out, because when I was still in the nursing home, my husband was going to put a ramp up, and they said there ain't enough room. And I, so that's why I did those drawings. But the ramp was not my idea, because if you ever use a ramp in the winter, they're not good. They're not good.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to hold this item over for more information. I guess I'll do a roll call. We've been doing a roll call on everything else. Jerry Feath?
Chairperson, can I interject? I did not get who did the second, so...
Jerry Feath.
Jerry, okay, thank you.
Okay. Jerry Feath?
Aye.
Lee Gossick?
I'd like to give you...
Sure.
Okay. With all due respect, staff, on page five of five, number two, you say, "An unnecessary hardship doesn't seem to exist." Well, it doesn't seem to exist. I don't see, there is a hardship that does exist. The lady rattled off three, four, or five of them. And any claim appears to be self-created. You know, after I read this thing here, you know, how can you be so hard, and, you know, postponing it, postponing it, and trying to get six inches here and six inches there? As I said, with all due respect, to, to, to grant the petitioner what she needs and what she wants, I think it's the right thing to do, and also the humane thing to do. I think you guys, staff especially, and maybe chairperson, and, you know, she's no spring chicken anymore. Why don't we just get this over with and grant her what she needs, and maybe help her out a little bit as far as if you have to rearrange something, whether it be, you know, the roof six inches here, or the sidewalk six inches here, you know, have some common, you know, why do you have to postpone this? It doesn't seem logical. It doesn't seem reasonable. Enough said.
Just a comment, too. Lee, I agree with you. I think they're going by statutes, and I don't know that Grinch that stole Christmas wrote those statutes, because it doesn't seem reasonable in cases like this. I agree with you. I think there's a little cloudiness here, in not knowing exactly what's proposed and what's going to be there. And I thought with the builder here, we could get a better idea of exactly what's proposed, so that we can make a, you know, a judgment that's based on facts, so.
Can I, can I just interject? I just want to, I clarify one point. So when we're talking about hardship, the way, the way we all, you know, in our daily lives think of hardship, a lot of times is economic or financial hardship, or other types of hardship. And as staff, when we're talking about a hardship with an area variance, we're talking about the inability to use a property. So like, if something's zoned residential, someone can't live there, do a daily kind of routine with their work, life, play. Or if we're looking at a commercial zoned property, we're looking at someone would not be able to operate like a business there, like a retail business, or in a case of an industrial property, that you couldn't operate a manufacturing business. So we're talking about a land use, like an area hardship, like from a land use standpoint. So absolutely, I mean, staff completely recognizes that economic, financial, health, I mean, there have been numerous hardships identified. And there, and there are many, many things that, that we want to be sensitive to, and we want to try to help where we can. And that's one of the reasons we have that clause, for example, for ramps and the code, because we don't want people to be unable to do things. That's why we have to meet ADA requirements. We have to meet numerous requirements. But when we're talking hardship, we're talking from a land use standpoint. I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, and to add to that, the statutes are very clear on what defines a hardship from a land use standpoint for both, both an area variance or a use variance. So again, as staff, we have to separate kind of our own personal opinion on the matter, because certainly, in many cases, we show sympathy, and I think in this case, we, we've done that, and we try to do that. But then we have to put on our code official hat and recognize the state statute clearly that does not let us take into account the economic or financial burden that anyone claims for a hardship. We just can't take that into consideration under statute.
And that, and that's why the citizens have a zoning board of appeals, and that's what we're doing. You know, whenever we do a decision, it's based on, on all the factors, I guess.
Lee, what was your vote exactly? Was it neer, air?
He wants it to happen sooner. Yes. You know, if, if you, ma'am, can get this contractor over as soon as possible, I think staff would be more than happy, not speaking for them, but just thinking outside the box, they'd be more than happy to help you and do what's needed to accommodate you, I would hope.
Okay. Bring, you're saying bring in what David Manny's?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
ASAP.
Just a brief comment on what Lee has brought forward here is, I don't think there's any of us who could disagree. There's a hardship, and that this is a, this is a case where you would like to help the recipient of the, of the relief. However, I think during this hearing, we heard a lot of things that were not on, on the paper, and, and it is, as I see our job, we vote...
paper, and it is, as I see our job, we vote yea or nay, and that sort of puts our imprimatur on what gets done. And if what gets done somehow is money wasted, doesn't suit the purpose, or doesn't solve the problem, then I feel partially responsible for that, and I don't like to do that. So I think Mike's inclination to delay this by as short an amount of time as we can, to find out that what's being proposed here, in fact, does meet the requirements, and it's just another review process, essentially, to see that things are done as close to being right as they can be. That's all I have.
Okay, I was in the middle of the roll call, and waiting for Lee to give me a yea or nay.
Okay, I'll go along with the, wait for a very short period of time and help the lady out.
Okay, Mike Hittner?
Aye.
Dennis Pollock?
Well, before I give a vote too, I, I see a problem, I guess holding it over probably is the right route to go with it. Certainly wish we could've solved it today, so we could've gone ahead and instead of postponing it, but if it's for a short time, within a month, or whatever, I would go along with an a vote, hold it over.
Okay, and I will vote a, so motion carried, five zero, to hold it over for more information.
And Mr. Chairman, if the order be in order, I'll move for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment, do we have a second? Have a motion and second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, meeting's adjourned.